I sent you on the phone with it. That's what I'm here for, actually. And he's like, all right, man, I'll just try to get you some work and make you an extra one.
I'm not doing that, man.
We ain't going down that road.
Yeah, exactly. I'm like, we got a business in the future. I'm not gonna be like six or five grand because of the other guy.
And it's like illegal?
Yeah. That's what I told him, like, like, nah. So he's like, all right, man, we'll just see your price back here and confirm it. I've done that like four times now. And I get a text last Friday, hey, brother, can you check your pricing on the syrup line?
It's not gonna change, dude.
In fact, it's cool because you win, we pressed it six months ago. And like every time somebody asks me about the price of it, I bump it a few percent.
You know, our steel, our steel prices went up, metal building prices went up.
Oh, they did?
Did they?
A little bit. That guy's supposed to be in town tomorrow, Thursday, I was like, tell you appropriate. I think he's got my.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald is by phone. Are you there, Commissioner McDonald?
I'm here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Kara Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with the invocation. Pastor Garcia was supposed to be here tonight. He is not here, so I've asked our city clerk if she would do that. And then the Pledge of Allegiance given by, who we have? Commissioner Melton. All right. If you'll stand, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this precious day that you've given to us. We thank you for the strength, dear God, that you give us for every day. And we thank you for your son, dear God. We thank you for the commissioners that are up here ahead of us. And we ask, dear Lord, that you will bestow your wisdom and your grace upon them, dear Lord, to do the city business, dear God. And we just are so grateful, dear God, for your many blessings that you give to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rachel. We're gonna start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Did Commissioner McDonald say aye? I'm assuming she did. Yes? Okay.
I think so.
I think so. Motion passes seven zero. I didn't hear a nay, so we'll just do same thing. Okay. We are going to start with, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. And we're gonna start with a proclamation. And who's coming up for this? Okay. So a couple of months ago, somebody, whose name I can't remember anymore, his last name was served, because I thought that was an interesting name. I said, how appropriate, is that? Okay. Reached out a couple of months ago and asked us if we would consider doing a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month, which is this month. And I immediately said yes. We have a large riding community in Alamogordo. And including my husband, who has joined the ranks. I don't know, he had some kind of midlife crisis when he retired and decided if I just hardly gave it to him. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I love it. It's beautiful. It's a great bike. Anyway. He just, I wouldn't let him when my kids were younger, because I was like, well, we need their dad, or if something happens, we're gonna do it. But anyway, so I have a proclamation that I'd like to read for this. And I'm hoping that maybe at some point, at least for a few days, we could even get that on the sign out there on Lexington Boulevard, just to make everybody aware that we do have a large motorcycle population in Alamogordo. So whereas New Mexico's extensive road systems provide some of the most magnificent riding in the United States, making the city of Alamogordo an ideal location for motorcycle use. And whereas many registered motorcyclists who undergo extensive training and testing in order to obtain a license call Alamogordo home and enjoy the roadways we have to offer. And whereas riders face a higher risk on the road than those operating vehicles, statistics show that those operating vehicles are at fault in the majority of all accidents involving a motorcycle. And whereas it is imperative that the motorists always exercise caution and stay alert while traveling on Alamogordo's road systems. And whereas the National Highway Safety, National Traffic, Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. It is the desire of this mayor's office to join the NHTSA in raising awareness of the growing number of motorcyclists on Alamogordo's roadways in order to help prevent accidents and, most importantly, to save lives. Therefore, I, Mayor Susan Payne, mayor of Alamogordo, do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-three as Motorcyclist Awareness Month in Alamogordo. And encourage all New Mexicans to renew their commitment to safe driving practices to watch for motorcyclists and to be aware of all who share the road.
Look twice, save a life, please.
Hey, that's right. Thank you, guys, for coming out. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation on One Hundred Percent Otero Update. Is this the PIT count?
Yes.
Yes, the PIT count. Perfect. This is Peg Crim. She is co-founder of One Hundred Percent Otero. If you do not know what One Hundred Percent Otero is, I encourage you to Google it or ask questions. I think it's become a really important part of our community and an important part of our daily discussion, so check it out.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
That's great. Oh, and there it is. Let's see if I can do this. Good evening. Thanks for letting me come tonight. Well, Susan already introduced me, so I'm gonna move on. I'm just gonna do a quick reminder of what One Hundred Percent Otero is. We're a local grassroots nonprofit with a mission of eliminating childhood trauma in Otero County, so that all of our kids, one hundred percent of our kids, can grow up to be responsible, productive, and healthy adults. We do that by supporting families in the ten vital services. And if you think back to old Maslow's Pyramid of Needs, way down at the bottom, the needs you need are, you know, air, water, food, safe place to live, things like that, security. And so those are the five surviving services that we work on. There's also then five thriving services. And if families have access, easy access to all of these services, hopefully, they will be successful and there will be less childhood trauma. But today, I'm here to talk to you, as Susan said, about the PIT count. PIT stands for Point in Time, and that's counting the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. So you might remember, a few months ago, we were here asking for money, which you did give us, which we appreciated very much and did use for this. So real quickly, a PIT count has two parts. There's the unsheltered PIT count, which that is people who do not have a safe place to stay at night. They're in lots of places around our community. I'll get to that in a minute. And there's the sheltered count. And that is individuals that are in a temporary shelter but do not have permanent, safe housing, a place to stay. What did we do? We did a lot of outreach. We tried to advertise a lot and get the word out that we were gonna be doing the PIT count, encouraging people to talk to us. We recruited and trained volunteers. We had twenty-seven people here in Otero County that volunteered their time to come out and help us, which I think was pretty impressive. The PIT count was based on where people slept the night of Monday, January thirtieth. And then we had the week after that to talk to people and ask them questions, answer the survey. So it depended where they slept that night. We partnered with a bunch of sites in town, which was great. We had a lot of community support for this. You can see churches, community meals, nonprofits, the courts, medical offices, counselors, all sorts of things. That was great. And the people that were out doing the work were our mobile teams. Our teams went to parks, parking lots, food pantries, laundromats, bus stops, all those places that you might find folks that do not have a safe place to live. And I just wanna call out the community health workers from Gerald Champion. And I think I wrote interns, but I think I meant residents, but I don't have my medical stuff down. But some of those folks were out helping us. They were out on the streets. Lots of people from various nonprofits, agencies, the courts in town. The Alamogordo Public Schools had their mobile medical unit out, and we're talking to people, and then individual volunteers. So it took a bunch of us. Here's some of the data. I'm not gonna read it all. I'm just gonna point out a couple that I think are of interest. We did about forty surveys. We talked to forty individuals, but that represented forty-nine people. What that means is that some people were, maybe had a partner or a spouse, but we just talked to one of them in a family. Or they had children with them. And we just talked to the one adult in each family. So we did forty surveys. The ages were all over the board, from anyone who had just become an adult to somebody my age or so. We had four children that were under eighteen in this count. They stayed in the places we know they, some of them stay. You know, and we also know that we did not talk to every individual that's experiencing homelessness right now. You know, some people, we had a couple of people who didn't wanna talk to us when we approached them, and then we know there's people out there that we didn't get. But what we're looking at is over. We're gonna do this many years in a row and look at trends. But we know we didn't count everybody. You guys can all read this. I think this one's really important. That two-thirds of the people reported that they have mental health conditions. And one-third have chronic illnesses. So that's somewhere where we can put some effort, hopefully, and help them out. Ten percent said they were homeless because of domestic violence. You know, people who mentioned they had no knowledge of shelters, no shelter for women. This was right when Pastor Anthony and Runner's Refuge was opening the shelter. So there's a little bit more shelter space available now, and there is shelter space for women. But there were people who didn't have dogs, that would not go to the shelter because they couldn't take their dog with them. So that's all the data that you see. But I wanted to share with you a couple of things that were just my observations for being out talking to people. The first thing was, you know, I was very impressed at how open and willing to talk most of them were. They, they shared their stories, even when it wasn't flattering to them. They admitted, you know, if they made some poor choices or had some problems, you know, all these people that admitted they had mental health conditions or chronic illnesses. So they were very open and willing to talk. They certainly acknowledged that they needed help with substance use. They appreciated the supplies that we gave them. Anybody that we surveyed, we gave a bag that had a hat, gloves, socks, personal items, stuff like that in it. They appreciated that. And I was just touched by how kind-hearted some of these folks were. And I'm just gonna give you one example. There was a young man we've talked to for a while, who literally has, he had a plot of land. That's the only thing I think he had to his name. He was building himself a structure from, what do they call it? Pallets. Yes, thank you. You know, under pressure, I can't come up with the words. From, you know, from pallets. He was using the wood from pallets to build himself a structure. Okay, that's impressive. He's working, he's trying to do his stuff. He then offered space to a friend of his who was worse off. I don't know what that means exactly, but he was sharing what he had, what little he had, with another guy who was even worse off than he was. And these are people out in our community. And the big thing that they all appreciated was, you know, someone coming in, talking to them, listening to them, and treating them as a human being. Because I don't know about you guys, but I know when I drive past folks, you know, who you think might be homeless, I'm always, what do I do? Do I do something? Do I do this or not? But they just wanna be treated like a human, like the rest of us. So it was, it was very difficult to do, but very rewarding also. So I'm inviting you to come out next year, if you wanna join us.
We participated, so.
Yeah. It's.
I'm just giving you a hard time. I'm sorry.
It's, it's, you know, you learn a lot. I did. The other part to the PIT count is the sheltered count. And that is people that do have a shelter temporarily. So there were eleven people in the Coke Shelter on the night of January thirtieth and three children. And there were three adults at the Runner's Refuge Shelter that night. The other thing that I'm gonna talk about is students. Think back to when you were a kid, say, in elementary school. And I don't know about you, but I had a relatively stable home life. And when I went to school, I was ready to have fun. I was ready to learn. I was ready to do all sorts of things. We have a lot of kids in our community that are not ready to learn when they get to school because they do not have a safe place to live. And in Alamogordo, that's almost a hundred and sixty students. So when they come to school, what are they thinking about? Is there gonna be dinner tonight? Where are we gonna be staying? Is it gonna be cold? Am I gonna be warm enough? You know, all sorts of things that would go through your mind if you don't know where you're staying. So this is another thing that I think we really need to work on. And I know the schools are doing as much as they can, and they're really trying. But to me, a hundred and sixty students that are not able to come to school ready to learn, that's tragic. That's gonna affect them their whole life. And I have to get a drink of water. So what do we do now? I was, you know, in the last few days, when I've been thinking about, okay, Peg, what are you gonna say when you go to the county office and the city commission and then the county commission this week? And I happened to be listening to, listening to a podcast, and they talked about the bystander effect. And the bystander effect is that when a lot of people see something that needs to be done, or something that needs to be taken care of, everyone looks around and says, oh, there's lots of people here, someone else will do it. And so we wrongly assume somebody else will take care of it. And I kinda feel like homelessness is that kind of thing, that here we all are in our community, but, you know, maybe the government should take care of it. Maybe the nonprofits should take care of it, the churches, the individuals, whatever. But if we're gonna make any progress, we need to do it. Another interesting thing they said on this podcast is that as the number of people who potentially could help increases, the number of people that do help decreases. So the more of us that are out here that can help, again, we, we say there's other people to do it, and less of us do it. And some of the things that go through our mind, and I felt I related to this very much because that's how I've felt in the past, is we often worry about what's gonna hap, how, if what we're doing is the right thing. And so, you know, we're afraid we're gonna say the wrong thing. We know it might be an awkward encounter. We might not want, you know, we're afraid the people might not want our help. They might think we're being rude. There's all sorts of reasons in our minds that we convince ourselves, maybe we can't do it. But the other thing that I guess is the good news is that research shows that when people do something nice, or something helpful, something kind, that not only does the person they do it for, the receiver, feel better, but they feel better. So this is an opportunity for us to do some good things in our community, make our community a better, safer, stronger place, and make sure that our kids all grow up to be healthy and responsible and productive. So I hope that you'll join us, continue to support us, and thank you very much for what you did this year. And are there any questions that I can try to answer?
Anybody have any questions?
One quick one. You gave the numbers for the sheltered. Did, what were the numbers for the unsheltered that we had out there?
The forty, we did forty surveys that were forty-nine people.
There was forty-nine. Okay, I guess I didn't see that slide, so.
It should be in your book. And let me, actually, let me get through this. There's a website where anybody can, anybody can get the report that wants it.
Slide eleven. Slide eleven.
Thank you. I didn't know what that was. There's also the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness. You can look at the results for all of New Mexico. And then there's nationwide statistics, too.
The forty surveyed were just the ones that were surveyed. They were surveyed the following week, but they were for that particular night.
Yes.
So they had to be homeless, meaning without any kind of habitable shelter.
Yes.
On that particular day.
So if somebody, like, if somebody stayed at their neighbor's house, or their cousin's house, or whatever, on January thirtieth.
Couch surfing, that didn't count.
We couldn't count them.
Right.
Even though the other three hundred and sixty-four days a year, they're homeless, or whatever.
Right.
Didn't matter. We can't count them because of the.
Yeah. And the only issue with these PIT counts is they do them in the middle of winter. And you're not gonna get, I don't believe you're gonna get as true of a count, doing them one day in January, because it's too darn cold out. Everybody's gonna try to find shelter. So you're not gonna get, and I'm not, I'm not discounting it, but you're not gonna get a truly, to me, it makes more sense to do it in May or June, or something like that, where you could get a real accurate count. Because, and I'm only saying that because I suggest that the, the numbers are much higher.
I, I'm sure they are higher, and I don't know, some of you that helped out that are here. You know, each time we do this, we learn more.
Right.
We learn more places to go. We make more connections. We build more relationships. And so that's one of the things that One Hundred Percent Otero is trying to do, is to build those relationships and trust with the community, so that next year, we'll go out and they'll go, oh, yeah, I remember you. Yeah, I'll talk to you. And, oh, yeah, and go see my friend over here, and go over there, and whatever. So hopefully, we will, you know, be able to get more and more each year.
Yeah.
Of finding, finding more of the people. Not that we want more.
The other thing I thought was interesting is, if you look on that same slide, it says one-third first time homeless. Due to COVID, I agree. I, I think that that is, I would suggest that number's pretty high, too. Because I know we talked to a lot of people who have never been in this situation before. And they are truly first time they've ever been in this situation. And I think that, I think that this last couple of years really aided in that. And so, so that's, I don't know, I just thought that was interesting, one-third first time homeless.
Yeah, and there is more information in the report. I just tried to pull some of the highlights out for you. Whoops. Do I? There we go.
Anybody else have any questions?
I don't.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye. See ya. I always joke around, you wanna clear the commission chambers? Just get to the next item. Half the people will get up and. It's one way to do it, right? Okay. We are going to move on. I do have some public comment, but it's all for item four. So if you don't mind, I'll wait till then. And we will move on to the city manager's report. Acting city manager's report.
I got a lot.
Good.
And I'm not like Brian, I don't have a bedtime, so.
That's because you have kids still at home, right?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the first thing is, our dare picnic is Thursday at Alameda Zoo from ten to two. I was asked to extend an invitation to the commission. That's an annual picnic, of course. I'm sure you all know what that is. Community service, Community Services Survey. We are pushing that out. And if you could spread the word, we have it on our main page, and we have it as a pinned post on Facebook. It's imperative that we get as much citizen input as possible, because that's gonna go into our Community Services Master Plan, which we will be presenting to commission. The scenic railroad crossing status, there's been very little movement. Where the contractors met with PNM the last week of April. The contractors received confirmation from PNM to move forward with the underground extension line. But there's still no, not even a tentative date, but we have expressed the importance, and it's well-known that we really wanna get this open as soon as possible. Tourism, my, one of my favorite conversations. We're just kinda getting the word out there. We are working on a couple of events specific to our tourism program. We have two coming in September that we're working on. I'll provide more details later as we get them worked out. We did submit the co-op grant, and we hope to know if we get awarded and how much we get them ordered by the next meeting. We have the tourism specialist position that closed. We have done interviews. We have some pretty awesome candidates, so we'll hopefully get that one filled. The regional jet service, the city and the chambers were working on an MOU so that they could take the lead. I haven't spoken to the chambers about it since the director has been on leave. In the meantime, however, we've been working with the FAA, with the state, Jane, our consultants. And regardless of what comes out of that regional jet, we're gonna focus on getting the one thirty-nine status. Veronica Ortega is up in Riodoso with FAA the rest of this week. There are just numerous items on the checklist that we could probably just start checking them off to see how close we can get and just start working with the state. Economic development, my second favorite subject. We met with Kevin and Jim from the state yesterday. We hope to have something in one of the June meetings, a company that's requesting state leader will be the fiscal agent on it. We had a really good meeting about how we're going to get more, how they're gonna get more involved with businesses in Alamogordo or sending them their way. I'm also working with Learn to Mexico for another possible leader opportunity. As far as economic development, I think I'm just trying to create the city of Alamogordo portfolio. When we look at the surveys or opportunities, one of the, some of the main questions are, how close are you to an interstate? Do you have an airport? Well, we're not that close to an interstate, but we do have an airport. So I think that's why the focus is trying to get to that one thirty-nine status, or some status that would help us in the economic development. An interesting, fun fact, we have been looking at software to do foot trafficking to Alamogordo, through Alamogordo, drive traffic through Alamogordo. And one of the latest software companies that we're working with got some real data for us. In two thousand, in twenty twenty-one, we had about half a million people come through our city. Of course, we, they wouldn't tell us where, when, what they were doing. They just let us know because they want us to buy their software.
Were they driving? Were they walking? Or no? I'm just.
They came through our city. That's, I can't tell you exactly. But that's, that's a tremendous amount of people coming to our city. So we need to figure out how to capture them. We're just kinda trying to build that out. I was asked about the road, roadway assessment and the report, and the status report. They, we have been working with, with the agency. They sent us the raw data. We sent our comments back. We hope to have something, kinda depending. We hope to have something, kind of depends on how much stuff there is for them to fix. But we hope to have something. And then we need to coordinate with the utilities department because they're also doing a utilities assessment. So we've got to kind of coordinate those and make sure they line up because we don't want a pretty street and then the following year we have to tear it up. So we've got to coordinate those. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a really good, solid plan to come forward to commission on how we're going to do that. Paiute Park, there have been a ton of rumors circulating, which I'm sure you all have heard, and they are all completely false. We haven't gotten any calls for accurate information. But the status is we are currently laying out a design that we will bring to commission. We're not closing any park. The Paiute Park was the first one that we were looking at repurposing, not repurposing, but re, making it more inclusive. It had, the equipment was older and the equipment was deemed dangerous. We're just going to have a design for, hopefully in June. At that same meeting, we are just going to have a basic presentation for the commission about all of our parks. Because I'm not even sure everybody knows where all of our parks are, how many parks we have, or what parks even handles. Because it's not just parks. It's the maintenance on the equipment, its medians, its entryways to some of our developed areas. So just a general FYI so that just everybody kind of knows where we're at. And then finally, one of the coolest things, most exciting ones. We went to Bonita Lake Friday. And then we met with game and fish yesterday. Belinda, the Parks and Rec Director, and the Utilities Director, Dave. And we met with them to possibly start stocking the lake for day fishing. There's still a lot of things that we need to do, but they're not extensive. They're things we could pretty much take care of. And then there's still things they need to do, like sampling the water, making sure the ecosystem is right for fish. But we're very hopeful that in the near future, we will at least be open partially for day fishing. So, and then the longer, long-term goal is camping and RVs and et cetera. But it's pretty exciting to see it filled up and to possibly get it restocked. So, and that's all I got.
Thank you. That is pretty exciting. Okay, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
Couple.
Commissioner Reardon.
I was going to see if staff could have, I think it'd just be Public Works, reach out to NMDOT out here. And they're on White Sands Boulevard, those, they've, they've milled some of them, but kind of right there by, I think it's First Savings or First American Bank in Blake's. You can tell they made an attempt because they put some asphalt in front of it. But you have a pretty good little jump right there. If they could, maybe, it's about every 60 or 100 feet, there's a, there's a bump in the road. And when you drive down White Sands, it'd make it a little more pleasant if they could fix those for us. And then, I don't know if anybody else has been paying attention to the news, but Title 42, when it, when it goes away next week, does, do we have a plan in place if we get a influx of migrants? We're literally an hour away.
Yeah, we read it, but I don't, we could probably meet with.
Yeah, I just, you know what I mean? I'm sure Richie's aware of it. But in the event that we get a huge influx of people coming through.
Yeah, that'll probably be a coordination between our emergency manager, which would be Chief Adler.
Okay.
And Chief Dutton.
But we, we kind of have something in place or a game plan in the event that that happens? Okay. That's all I had.
That's good to know. I'm still holding out hope that they'll do the right thing, but.
It's kind of scary. It's so close to home, you know?
It is very scary, yeah. No, I've had people reach out to me and ask me as well.
They moved all of those temp floors that were sitting at first in the bypass. They moved them all, the ones from the Afghan Village, down to El Paso somewhere, so.
Yeah, they're right there as you go in. Yep, it is. It's very scary. Anyway, okay. So I have, I, I attended a memorial service for Carla Thompson this afternoon. For those of you who did not know Carla, you missed a treat. She was the worship pastor at Cottonwood Christian Fellowship. Before that, she was a worship pastor for many years at Christ Community Church. And she died very suddenly and very unexpected. She was 63. there's a lot of people that are devastated. And, but not Carla, because she knows where she is, so. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that she was an amazing person and our community lost a real treasure. And that was a tough one. But, so for those of you who didn't know, she was a worship pastor. And I bring that up just because so many people in our community knew her. I would say there was probably 600 people there today. And our community really lost somebody special, so. To her family, I say pray for them. And, yeah, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on there, and I believe that city clerk has one small correction.
It's about a bear. So there needs to be a correction to the April 25 regular meeting minutes. The heading state city manager Caesar, it needs to be amended to read Assistant City Manager Hernandez.
Okay, did everybody get that? Yes. I think it's at.
It's on page 43.
It's at the top. Yeah, it's at the top. Where it says Brian, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, for the April 25 regular meeting minutes.
All right. And with that small correction, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or item three?
So.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second? Second from Mayor Protem Wright? All those in favor, aye? Aye? All those opposed? And motion passes. Is Commissioner McDonald still on the line?
She's still here. Are you there, Sharon?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Just checking.
So all those opposed, nay. And motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to unfinished business. Item four, we do have three people signed up. And I'm going to let them speak first on that item. We have Gary Lindy. And item four, just for the record, is consider an act upon ordinance 1676 for first publication of a map amendment for a property located at 1209 Ohio Avenue.
Okay, once again, I'm Gary Lindy. I own the property at 1200 Ohio. And wishing to keep this as brief as possible since we've all discussed it previously, all I want to say is that everyone who signed the petition still strongly protests this rezoning. So on behalf of the protesters, we ask each of you to deny this zoning request. That's all I'd like to say, other than thank you for hearing our, our concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. I appreciate it. And next we have Angie Schneider.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor Payne, members of the commission. I'm Angie Schneider. I'm one of the homeowners on the 1200 block of Ohio. I'm here to protest the rezoning of 1209 Ohio from R3 to R4. Hopefully you all, I had submitted an initial letter prior to the other commission meeting on April 25. Hopefully you all got my second letter. I just stand on, on the comments that are contained in that letter. And I also just want to point out that I'm joined by a number of homeowners from the 1200 block of Ohio who are here to, to stand in opposition of this. They all signed the petition, so you all have that information. But I just wanted to highlight that. And then I just, I signed up to speak to thank you all. Everybody here made time to speak with us and to hear what we had to say. And I just sincerely, sincerely appreciate that. And it's been just a humbling experience in terms of you all as elected officials taking the time to talk with us and, so individually, and so make that clear. But thank you for that. And I just urge you all to deny the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Will Green.
So I'm echoing sentiments, I guess. You know, obviously echoing sentiments of gratitude towards everybody that has heard our concerns. Showing gratitude for the neighbors that have shown up tonight, that have signed the petition. Unfortunately, Mr. Kehano is not here. I don't know that that speaks any, any volume towards his application for rezoning. I think it does to me. But I, I'd like to leave it with the letters that we've submitted, with the information that we have submitted. I, I think that we've covered this pretty well in depth from the last meeting to the meeting here tonight. So I'm just going to leave it at that. And thank you very much for entertaining our protests.
Thank you. Okay, I only show three on the list, right? Nobody, okay. Just want to be sure. All righty. With that, we have Sean, whose name I can never spell. McGrannigan?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Ooh, look at me.
It's kind of a hard one.
Sean McGrannigan, our Assistant City Planner, with some information.
All right, so I'm going to go through the slideshow again, sort of just rehash what we did last time. I can speak on it. So the property owner, Prop Fine Holdings, is requesting a rezoning for 1209 Ohio Ave. Resoning from R2, sorry, R3 multifamily, R32 family dwelling to R4 multifamily dwelling. So we sent out 24 letters to surrounding property owners within 200 feet. Two letters were returned undeliverable. We've received six letters of opposition from residents in the area and a petition with 36 signatures opposing the rezoning. However, there's surrounding properties that are, neighboring properties to 1209 Ohio that are, are for multifamily dwelling. So we recommend approval of the rezoning from R32 family to R4 multifamily. Any questions?
Got one quick question. How many, it's the light green on your map, correct?
Yes.
I think you guys got, is that the right map there?
Yeah, so the property, it's the one with the 1209 Ohio has the yellow dot and then the multifamily is the green.
So the one neighbor is, I think he's on the next meeting to have his rezoned back to R3 from R4?
1200 Ohio, so the kind of diagonal, yeah.
So we'll basically just have, what, three in there that are R4?
It'll be three in a row, yeah, including the one across the street.
Okay. The, the three that are currently R4 there that'll be left, are they currently used as, as multifamily or are they single-family type structures?
I don't believe the, I think it's 525. I don't believe, I think that's a single-family.
Okay. What about that 1123?
I'm honestly not sure what the use of that is.
Okay. And then I don't want that next street over, is that Indiana or Michigan? 1200 is, do we know anything on that one as well? Is it single-family?
1200 is a single-family.
That's at St. John's.
That's it, church. Is it?
Yeah.
That's at day school, I believe.
So these 1100, is that? Bella? The two that are, the 1123 and 1118, is that the block? Is that where I'm at?
Yes.
Oh, where your, your, loving is at? You're on the 1100 block. So I don't believe it's showing on this map.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you're just a little further away. You're not within the protest area.
Okay. No, I was asking because I thought I could answer Commissioner Reardon's question, but that's okay. I'm farther down. That's fine.
Yeah, you're blocked down.
Because ours is basically empty except for two residences and then us, so, yeah.
So all of the existing R4s that are down there are being used for something like R1 or, or businesses.
Yeah, I don't think there's any businesses.
No, not businesses. I believe they're just single-family dwellings.
They're all single-family?
Yes.
So even though they're R4, their uses aren't R4?
And what's the one, the, the dog groomer that's on the corner of 12 and?
If I'm not mistaken, she is C3. It's not showing there, but I believe it's C3.
Okay.
That's that 11.
Yeah, it's just a little farther down.
Yeah, the dark brown on the map is C3. And the dark, the lighter kind of tan color, that's C1 neighborhood business.
Does anybody else have any questions? No? Nobody? Commissioner McDonald does not have any questions?
Let me ask her. Sharon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Just make a motion that we deny the rezon request.
I'll second.
So commissioners, I would just like to remind you that this is approval for first publication and not the rezoning itself.
That's fine. Okay, let me revise my motion. I'll make a motion to deny the rezon request for first publication.
Okay, and this is item four?
And I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to deny the rezon request for first publication. And I have a second from Mayor Protem Wright.
Now that we have a second, I got one other question. Did we want to elaborate on the, the, I guess the attorney sent us the information on the conditional zones? And it didn't look like we were able to do that, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll just leave the motion the way it is.
Just so everybody understands, we did get some information. There was some question last time about whether we can put a condition on it. And I think we did get some information that we could not put a condition on it, so. That sort of changed things a little bit, obviously. Okay, so, just so we're clear. Item four, Commissioner Reardon made a motion that we deny the reason, the.
Request.
Let me say that one more time. Deny rezoning for first publication. I have a second from Mayor Protem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Mountain?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion, I guess I say motion passes, right? Item fails, motion passes?
Yeah, the motion passed.
Okay, 7-0. And the request for first publication is denied. All right, we're going to move on to item five. Consider an act upon the proposed city charter recommendations by the city charter committee. And I think Shannon Wright is going to come up and give us some information on that. So now that we've denied the request, the condition is you have to stay and listen. What? It's the only way we can get people to stay around here. We can move public comment to the end? Good point.
It used to be. Who wants to watch SportsCenter?
I didn't tell you that part in the beginning, sorry.
Okay, so I'm, I'm here speaking on behalf of the city charter committee. And I'd like to thank Ben Luhan Jr., who's the chairman, Vesta Edmund, who's a member, Tim Mills, member, who's present tonight. Vincent Jones was on our board, but he wasn't able to make any of the meetings. Myself and Elise Barella and Marjorie Schultz, who is also in the audience tonight. These people have been very helpful. This has been quite a learning experience for me because I've never done this before. So it was kind of interesting to get to see and learn some of the process here. Everybody put in a lot of time, effort, energy. And good information came out of this. And I think we did a pretty good job in a short period of time. We only made one more change to this from the last meeting that we presented this. And it was on Article 7, Section 3, the term of office. And on that one there, the change was made that the office holders, commissioners, and mayor-at-large elected for the four-year term are limited to serving no more than two consecutive elected terms. And elections shall be staggered, held on a staggered basis for the first Tuesday after the first Monday of each odd-numbered year. So I don't know if there's any other questions or concerns that you all have at this time, but we. but we had these changes. Rachel, and Stephanie, and Dylan, everybody was very helpful in putting all this together and keeping good minutes. And I just, it's, it's a pleasure and an honor to get to work with a group of people that are dedicated like this to our community.
Does anybody have any questions?
Got one quick one. So for the city attorney, did you have a chance to research on the term limits? I'm all for the term limits, but did we have a chance to research whether, since we are nonpartisan, whether we're allowed to put that in there?
We're allowed to.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure, because I remember vaguely in the past, they had said we weren't, but.
Yeah, I looked into it, and there was nothing that prohibits us.
Probably says we can't, or can, but it doesn't say we can't, that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to double-check.
Anybody else have any questions? So, did you say that was the only change, or the only significant?
That was the only change that was added from the last meeting. And the other ones, I don't think, Stephanie, was everything else from those other changes that we made, those were all okay?
So from the time that we first presented it to commission to this one, there, only been one change?
Okay.
Do we need to decide how, you know, all of these changes will have to be put on the ballot? Do we need to decide whether we're going to place them all as one question? Or each, each one as a question on the ballot?
It would probably be easier to just put it on the ballot as, you know, one thing, like the charter, you know, just to prove the charter as a whole, versus trying to piece it. I mean, that is up to you guys.
I know in the past, when we did this, we did it as a couple of different items, but we don't want to get them overwhelmed with fifteen questions on there, you know what I mean, on the ballot, so.
Yeah, there wasn't that many. I think there was only a few changes that were, were made. There might have been a handful, I've got, I've got some of those here with me.
And then, I think that was my other question in the last meeting, was some of these are just basically bringing us into compliance with state law? Can those be passed by ordinance by us for those changes? Or do they have to go on the ballot?
They have to be passed by ordinance.
They can be passed by ordinance? Okay, but then the other changes have to go on the ballot?
To get in compliance with state statute, we're just getting ourselves into compliance, so that wouldn't have to go on the ballot. But anything that is silent or new, would, silent in the state statute or new to ordinance would have to go on the ballot.
Has to go on the ballot, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Wright?
Actually, I have an interesting question, kind of pertaining to my seat. You know, this state's, they're limited to serving no more than two consecutive elected terms. So the fashion that I came in, and I believe other commissioners as well, came in on a halfway through a term, but it was through a special election. So it's, so technically, like my position is, I've been elected twice. But I've only served six years.
Consecutive four-year terms, I think is what it says, so.
Okay, but then it says, no more than two consecutive elected terms.
But it does state four-year terms, so, like say you came in at two years.
Just for clarification, so.
But I don't think it would count for years. Yeah, for two years, I don't think it would count. Until after this is passed.
So as appointed, as appointed, that doesn't count, I guess. So it would be only if you were elected into it, those two elected terms.
Right, but what he's asking is...
Mine has been, because it was a special election.
Right.
To fill, to fill districts.
So his first term was only two years.
But it was a special election.
So we may want to...
But this shouldn't apply until after this is passed, correct?
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna be for the future, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying it wouldn't affect him now.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
But we may want to...
Actually, didn't they change in the, I'm sorry, it's kind of getting a little confusing here, but in the Local Election Act, didn't they change the wording as far as if somebody resigns their seat, we appoint now? We don't, even if it's before the two-year mark, we appoint to that seat, rather than have a special election?
That's correct, Commissioner Reardon, yes, because...
So that would, that would kind of, yeah.
So there's no more special, there's no more, if somebody resigns at the two-year mark, we still appoint, we don't?
It's an appointment now. And so therefore, the, the situation with Commissioner Wright would not...
Wouldn't even happen.
Occur anymore.
That makes sense. And Commissioner Pollan, myself, are in the same boat.
Right, and you are appointed, I just didn't realize, back in my day, we had special elections.
Yeah, that's right, mine was a special election, so that's why I brought it up.
Right, okay, all right, well then that solves that problem, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you for your hard work. I happen to know that you worked very hard at this. So thank you guys for all your hard work and for your service to the city. It always does my heart good to see people step up, because it's sometimes very rare. So thank you for that.
I think you have to make a motion.
Yes, no, I know, I'm just...
How do we need to break that up? Are you guys gonna bring it back to us, the ones that we can do by ordinance? And then we'll put the ones that have to go on the ballot, you'll have to bring that back to us, or?
Would it come back as an ordinance, the whole thing?
Yes, yes, so I can bring it back to you as the ordinance, just the ones that need to be conformed with state statutes. I also need to bring a resolution, however, to bring these charter amendments that are gonna go to the voters in front of the commission, so you can approve that resolution, and then we can send that over to the county clerk.
Okay, so how does our motion need to be stated?
Yeah.
Do you approve the recommendations?
Okay, that's all you need? And then you guys will bring the resolutions and all that back to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been ten years since we've done that, so that's kind of...
Do I have a motion on item five to approve the recommendations of the Charter Committee?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Burnett, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Reardon? And this is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor, aye? All those opposed, and motion passes seven-zero. Oh, look at that. We're done, well, we're done with the events, okay. So, item six, I have a motion to adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with ten-dash-fifteen-dash-one to discuss limited personnel matter, matters, city manager, acting city manager, and real property located at three-ten North White Sands Boulevard. Do I have a motion?
Somebody.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, do I have a second?
Second, but I got a quick question. Are we taking Sharon with us to executive session?
I have no idea. Are we taking Sharon with us?
Are we taking you with us to exec session, or?
Yes, somebody else will have to use their phone.
Somebody has to call me back.
Okay.
So I could take my phone home with me.
You gotta love technology, right? So I had a second from Commissioner Reardon, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, second from Commissioner Reardon, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Mountain?
Aye.
Nick Paul? Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald? Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. We are adjourned, thank you, everybody. Let's go that way.